Welcome to the special meeting of the Cape Coral City Council. Today is September 7th, 2023. This meeting now comes to order. Please stand for the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Mayor Gunter.
Here.
Councilmembers Costin.
Here.
Cummings.
Here.
Hayden.
Here.
Long.
Here.
Shepherd.
Here.
Steinke.
Here.
Welsh.
Here.
All present.
Item four, citizens' input time. A maximum of 60 minutes is set for the input of citizens on matters concerning city government. Three minutes per individual. Please remember to state your name. We utilize the podium to my left, your right, for anyone that would like to participate in citizens' input.
Hello. My name is Grace Gilberti, and I've been a resident of Cape Coral for 28 years. And I've gotten more involved with looking at what's going on because I see our city is growing like crazy. And I just, I just want to make sure that we keep, we keep the city. I know we can't stop it from growing, but we don't, we don't want it to be in Miami. So I just, I just, I know that you guys have gone to Miami, have gone to Naples to look at things and have compared it. And we, we don't want that here. So I just want to put that out there in a comment. And also, I'd like to ask you regarding the, um, the budget committee. I heard that somebody was let go. Everybody quit. So I want to know what exactly happened with the budget. This, um, I know that you have your retreat in the summer sometime. So I'd like to know if there was something about the budget that you guys didn't agree on or how it was being done? Or I, I really don't know what happened. And I'd also like to, I'd also like to have some input from citizens of this city because I see you're doing a lot of planning. You have a planning committee with lots of people around, uh, asking for different things, but the citizens themselves are not able to speak. And I know that there is some citizens that were put in, uh, down at the yacht club. There was some type of lottery or something. I don't know how they got in. I don't even know what's going on with that. So, um, those are a couple of things that I wanted to bring up, and I appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak during citizens' input? Seeing none, citizens' input is now closed. Is there any council discussion on citizens' input? Councilmember Welsh?
Yes, um, for the woman who spoke. Uh, if you want to send an email to all of us, if you send an email with those questions specifically to citycouncil@capecoral.gov, um, you'll get different responses from each of us or, or one, one of us will definitely get back to you and probably be able to be a more intimate conversation than we can have here as far as what's going on where and what advisory boards and what they do. So that's, um, it's not a back and forth, so. But yeah, if you want to send it, um, I'll keep an eye out for it and, um, definitely respond to your questions. Thank you.
And one of the things that you had mentioned, the Budget Review Committee, we will be having a discussion on that particular topic next week at a committee. The whole meeting on Wednesday starts at 9:00 a.m. So you could either, you know, tune in, uh, at home on television, Channel 98, where you can, uh, you're more than welcome to, to attend the meeting as well. Okay, seeing no other, uh, comments for citizens' input, we'll move on to item five, which is ordinances and resolutions. The first item that we have is ordinance 6923. This is the first hearing for this particular ordinance. Madam City Clerk, please read the title and set the second and final public hearing date.
Ordinance 69-23, an ordinance to establish and levy ad valorem taxes within the corporate limits of the city of Cape Coral, Florida for the tax year 2023, providing for the levy of ad valorem taxes in the amount of 5.3694 mils based on the assessed value on non-exempt real and personal property located within the city limits of the city of Cape Coral, providing for the levy of ad valorem taxes in the amount of 0.1675 mils based on the assessed value of the appropriate real and personal property located within the city limits of the city of Cape Coral for funds for annual debt service for the city of Cape Coral, Florida, general obligation bond, series 2019, and the city of Cape Coral, Florida, general obligation bonds, series 2021, providing for the manner of assessment and collection, providing severability, repealing all ordinances in conflict with this ordinance, providing an effective date. The second and final public hearing will be September 21st, 2023.
Good evening, Mr. Mason.
Mayor, council members, Mark Mason, Financial Services Director. Ordinance number 69-23 again is the first of two required public hearings by Florida statute. The first one sets the tentative millage rate. Once the millage rate is set, it cannot go any higher, however, it can go lower. The, uh, okay. Ad valorem taxes have two, we have two millage rates. We, uh, ad valorem taxes, the larger of the two millage rates provide for the general operations of the city. It is not the sole revenue source that we have, but it is the largest revenue source in the general fund for operations. Uh, the second one is a debt service millage rate that we'll be talking about shortly and that covers the cost of the bonds that were issued to date with regard to the, um, the Parks and Recreation Bonds that were issued that was authorized in 2018. Millage rates are calculated or taxes are calculated by utilizing the millage rate times the taxable value. Uh, we'll equal your, your ad valorem taxes, and we generally express the millage rate in thousand-dollar increments. The proposed millage rate, uh, the tentative millage rate is not to exceed 5.3694 mils. Uh, this was approved by the city council on July 26th, 2023. It has been noticed in the trim notices that have gone to all property owners within the city of Cape Coral. Tentative rate is 12.99% increase over the rollback rate of 4.7519 mils. The city's, city manager's tentative budget is based upon the millage rate of 5.3694 mils. Overall, the general fund of $228 million is 5.141% increase over fiscal year 23, uh, 2023's budget. Uh, this is certainly less than what we have seen from a inflationary rate over the last couple of years. Uh, and, uh, overall, the overall budget at 1 mil, 1 billion 95,000, 95 million is about 13.25% increase over fiscal year 23. And the majority of the costs that are included in that increase is associated with capital improvements for utilities. And the tentative millage rate for Parks and Recreation Obligation Bonds is .1675. So by law, the city council must adopt a tentative millage rate. Uh, the, again, you have the set, the tentative millage rate that is set prior to the approval of tentative budget that is also required in any resulting budgetary adjustments that will be made during the public hearing for ordinance 7023, which is, we will be doing shortly. And we're here for any, any questions or discussion.
Thank you. I know a public hearing. Is there anyone wishing to speak on ordinance 69-23? Please come forward. Seeing none, public hearing is now closed. Is there a motion to approve setting the tentative operating millage rate?
Yes, motion, motion to approve the proposed operating millage rate of 5.3694 and the Parks General Obligation Bond at .1675.
Second. Okay. Any council discussion on that? Madam City Clerk?
If I may?
Yes, sir.
Just a bit of clarification. Um, the motion should be to set the proposed operating millage rate at 5.3694 mils, which is .6175 mils or 12.99% more than the rollback rate and setting the proposed millage rate for the Parks General Obligation Bond at one, at .165 mils.
Okay. Seldom do we have that kind of context in a motion.
You, you have to by law in this one.
You have to by law?
Yes, have to by law. Thank you.
All right. I will restate the motion to set the proposed operating millage rate at 5.3645 mils, uh, which is .6175 mils or 12.99% more than the rollback rate and setting the proposed millage rate for the Parks General Obligation Bond at .1675 mils.
Second. Second degree?
Can, can I clarify? I may have misheard, but I thought you said 5.3654. I'm sorry.
5.3694.
Okay, thank you.
We good?
Yes.
Okay. Please call the roll.
Steinke.
Aye.
Welsh.
Aye.
Costin.
Aye.
Cummings.
Aye.
Gunter.
Aye.
Hayden.
Aye.
Long.
Aye.
Shepherd.
Aye.
Eight ayes, motion carried.
Okay, we'll move on to the next first hearing, ordinance 70-23. Madam City Clerk, please read the title. Set the second and final public hearing.
Ordinance 70-23, an ordinance adopting the city of Cape Coral operating budget, revenues and expenditures, and capital budget for the fiscal year 2024 for the city of Cape Coral, Florida, repealing all ordinances in conflict with this ordinance, providing severability and an effective date. The second and final public hearing will be September 21st, 2023.
Thank you. Mr. Mason.
Sir, Mr. Mayor, council members, Mark Mason, Financial Services Director. Again, similar to the tentative millage rate ordinance, 70, ordinance 70-23 is the first. Uh, we're having the first hearing, and the final hearing will be on September 21st at 5:05 p.m. in the same place, city council chambers. The proposed budget that was provided to the city council was a little over $1 billion, uh, and we had some identified changes that we went through with the city council during the budget workshops at four, at a little over $4.6 million with a, we, ending up with a tentative budget of 1 billion 95,678,548 dollars. Included in that, in those changes that were, that were approved by the city council during the budget workshop, we've increased the minimum staffing or we got to the minimum staffing by adding three additional firefighters. There's a funding for the firefighters comes from both the general fund as well as the fire assessment fund. And the, we've also added an additional patrol officer. We've increased the transfers out from the general fund for the fire bay doors as well as adding additional city beautification. And so the total amount of the changes that you just saw on the previous page of $4.7 million arrives at the four, 1 billion and $95 million budget. In addition, we have 63 new positions that we've added, although we've eliminated some positions as well. Overall, on a net basis, we're at 53 positions with 63 addition, additional. We've also moved some positions from the general fund as well as in, from other funds throughout the organization. Uh, so the, but the, for the, for the most part, uh, some of the things that we're looking to do with stormwater, we're looking to, uh, add additional crews in order to decrease the overall backlog that we have for stormwater improvements. Uh, with police, we're bringing on a number of, uh, of police officers included in the investigative services bureau as well as patrol. Uh, this meets the strategic plan for the police department as well as bringing on additional firefighters, engineers, et cetera, to, uh, continue to meet minimum staffing for the fire department. Overall, uh, we've had 82.5 positions that have been added. 19 and a half of those are in the charter schools. We have a enterprise fund with between stormwater as well as, uh, the utilities fund, 22 and a half positions with 20 positions in the general fund. A number of budget highlights that are included. These are initiatives that are included in the, in the, in the document. This is things that we will, that are over and above what our normal operations would, would entail. Uh, we have additional funding in there for phase two of the fire, fire training facility that is now under, uh, that will be under construction here shortly. Uh, we also have, uh, an additional $9 million that is coming from the state to support some, an expansion of the Emergency Operations Center. Uh, the North Cape Public Safety Complex, we received $1 million from the, from the state, and we also expect to receive additional funding from other sources in order to support that particular project as well. Infrastructure-wise, uh, we, we continue with the road surface resurfacing. We've increased the overall allocation for road resurfacing to $7.4 million. Uh, and, and that in and of itself will end up looking at that in the future for increasing the allocation is, again, in the future. Uh, we also have intersection improvements, a little over $3 million that are going towards four inner, four control devices at various locations in the city as well as, uh, the second half or the second tranche of the PDNE are the planning, design, and engineering study for the widening of Pine Island Road is also included in this budget. We also have, uh, a, a planned expansion of Northeast 24th Avenue from two to three lanes, a little over $20 million. And of course, we have Northeast One and North Three, North Three utility extension as well. On the park side, we have continuous, uh, facility renewal. Uh, we're going to be adding a turf, field turf, uh, in, for storm field as well as additional parks, uh, that we will be, the, from operational sparkle. We have Colossiachi Shoreline Preservation at $2 million, and we're also going to be replacing three playgrounds at various parks in the city. Environmentally, uh, we're putting aside a little over $3 million for media and beautification. We have the stormwater system improvements that we've talked about, a little over $1 million, and surface quality, quality improvements at $1.2 million. And of course, we talked a little bit about the additional crews for stormwater in order to decrease the overall backlog that we have in place. And so the next steps for the adoption of the final budget as well as the final hearing for the millage rates will be on Thursday, again, September 21st, 2023 at 5:05 p.m. in the council chambers. And then we will be looking at adopting both the millage rates and the budget at that time. Here for any questions?
Thank you. Now open up public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on ordinance 70-23, please come forward.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. John Bashaw, Northwest Cape Coral. Uh, thank you for the opportunity to speak on the 2024 tentative budget. I have two questions. Uh, both are generally related to the Parks and Rec budget, specifically to the rowing club. The first question, are there any funds that are being earmarked or will funds be redirected to move the rowing club under Parks and Recreation and make them a city function? And my second question is, uh, resolution 12920 was put forth when the Tropicana Neighborhood Park splash pad was removed during the Tropicana Neighborhood Park redesign. And this was back in 2020. The resolution was not approved, but a commitment was made by the previous city manager that a splash pad would be put into Joe Stonus Park. The city council meeting minutes from June 1st of 2020 memorialized this commitment. Specifically, volume 75, page 281, city manager Zurlag stated he would include it in the budget. That funding has not appeared in any previous budget, and I'm wondering if it is considered in this budget as I see a splash pad is now being considered for JC Park. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak for ordinance 70-23? Please come forward.
Hi. I don't know if this is the exact right place, but, um, we're building up the infrastructures and sidewalks and roads and things like that, and we're allowing builders to build houses 24/7. And there's a big problem with trying to get healthcare around here. There, I have two children that require, uh, special services. I've adopted, we adopted through, um, foster care, and they require PTOT and speech, and you can't get it in Cape Coral for kids. You have to go to Port Charlotte or Fort Myers. There are no therapy services here for children. And I know many of the doctors have, have wait lists. I called to get an, excuse me, appointment with my doctor, and there's a wait list of like three weeks. My son needed glasses, and it takes like three or four months to get in for glasses because of the lacking healthcare services in the area. So is there going to be any?
We'll get staff, ma'am, to get with you.
Right.
And try to help you out. Uh, this isn't an open dialogue or a question and answer session.
Okay.
But we'll try to get someone in the staff to, uh, uh, find out exactly what your concern is.
It's just a concern, and I know a lot of other people that have mentioned the same thing. People mention it, you know, on Facebook and people that I meet, so.
Okay, just have a seat. We'll get someone, uh, to speak with you. Is there anyone else wishing to, uh, speak on, uh, ordinance 70-23?
Hi, Grace Gilberti again. Um, I just wanted to know, and I had asked this question, I think, before regarding the bonds for the city parks. Like exactly how much were those bonds? What are we paying on them? Because there's expenditures with that. And what are they covering with these parks? Um, it's, to me, it's not really clear. And when it comes to beautification, how do we get, how do we get our, uh, Skyline Boulevard beautified between Cape Coral Parkway and Eldorado? It looks, it doesn't look like it's beautified.
Okay. Thank you.
That's it. Thank you.
Again, we'll get staff to get with you as well. Any other, uh, public input on ordinance 70-23? Seeing none, public hearing is now closed. Do we have a, uh, motion to approve setting the tentative operating capital budget with ordinance 70-23?
Motion to set the tentative operating and capital budget at 1 billion 95,678,548.
Second. Okay, councilmember Steinke.
Thank you. Mark, uh, I'm sure it's just a point of clarification, and I'm not able to figure out the accounting on it, but, um, we had, uh, approved the fire bay doors, that $425,000, and it, it's seeming like I'm seeing it in three spots. I'm seeing it in the general fund that looks like it's also included with, uh, the allowance for the three firefighters, uh, in the 805 392. And then I see it again in increased transfer for the bay doors. Could, could you explain how that's just happened in one time and not three times?
Uh, it, it's the, it's a function of fund accounting and the use of funds for government. And so, uh, we're transferring a certain portion of those bay doors out of the general fund into a capital project fund. We're transferring a certain portion of it out of the fire, uh, assessment fund into the capital project fund. So the revenues and the expenditures have to balance. And so every fund is required to be balanced with both revenues and expenditures. So it becomes a function of accounting. So it hasn't happened, it's not three times. It's just that it's still one project in the capital project fund. It's just that it has to come from two different, different places to get there.
And so?
It's not, it's not 400, it's not 425,000 times three is what I'm trying to tell you. It's just once.
So the 425 is included in coming up with that, that 3,26737? Is that correct?
It is.
And then inside of the 805 392 in the special revenue fund, how is that not included in the 1.296378?
All right. So the 425 went to, from the general fund to the special revenue fund. Special revenue fund transferred it down to the capital project fund. So that's the reason why it's there, but it's not three times. Unfortunately, it's just, it's a matter of, you, we're combining a little over 40 some odd funds together. All of those funds have to balance. Some of the money is coming from one location. It's being transferred to another location. In order to do that, you have to have the revenue side and the expenditure side in both places when you're doing that. And so that's, that's what you're actually seeing. In this particular case, you're seeing the, the, the expenditure side of the house, but it's in order to get it to the final resting place of doing it as a capital project, because that's what we're doing as a capital project. It's coming from the general fund to the fire fund into the capital project fund.
So, so those will balance off when we look at revenues where we're only looking at expenses here?
Correct.
I got you. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Long?
Thank you. Yeah, my question was on the bay doors as well, but I might be, uh, completely confused. I wasn't aware that we did approve them. I thought we pulled that out of the, um, the approval and the adjustments. Is that not correct?
No, not that I'm aware of, sir.
Okay. That was a misunderstanding on my end. And then real quickly, Mr. City Manager or Mr. Mason, could you just address the, uh, question regarding whether there's an allocation, I believe that was the word, or an earmark in here for, uh, rowing club services in the Parks and Recreation Department at Tropicana Park?
Yeah, and for both, uh, you want to handle it? Okay. For both, the, the rowing club, no, there is no allocation in the budget included to bring them into the city and operate under Parks and Recreation. As for a splash pad for Joe Stonus Park, there is no allocation or funding included in the budget for that.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
And one quick question that I had, uh, Mr. City Manager. And I know that we've only highlighted certain items, uh, in the presentation, uh, but one of the meeting beautification, uh, that you noted in here, uh, it says, uh, Sea-Tac, Cape Coral Parkway between Jakita and Sands. Was that in the priority list that was already established? Um, because, uh, and correct me if I'm wrong, my colleagues, I don't ever remember having that discussion of any meeting improvements between Jakita and Sands. So I was kind of shocked when I saw it there. So I didn't know if that was from a previous, uh, priority list that we had, uh, had initially because, you know, I'm, I'm the chair of the Sea-Tac. I don't remember that discussion at all. And I know we've exhausted, uh, conversations with, uh, meeting and beautification in the Sea-Tac meetings, but I don't remember that topic specifically.
Get back with you on the answer, but we received the information from Public Works on this. So we'll, we'll get back with you on it.
Thank you. Thank you. And I know it's just highlights, so that monies could be utilized in many different ways. Uh, but I was just a little shocked to see that because I don't, I don't recall that conversation.
Sure. No problem.
Uh, councilmember Cummings?
Yeah, at the, um, where the rowing clubs at, didn't we have a splash pad out there?
No, on the, um, I'm gonna have to go back and, and reference what, uh, Mr. Bashaw, um, brought forward. And I know during the discussion, many discussions after, uh, um, city manager Zurlag left, there were some concepts that were presented to the community. And at the time, one of those concepts had a splash pad element in it. Um, in, in going through the community input and all of the, um, dialogue, the splash pad at Tropicana Park was removed. I do know there were subsequent discussions about, is there an appropriate place to put one? And the final resting place for that was at Lake Mead. So we did have a splash pad as part of the GO bond that did not make it, uh, into Joe Stonus. I know there, I, I do recall there being, um, discussions about whether or not one could even fit there. Was it, was there space? Uh, was there parking? And ultimately, the splash pad that was funded out of the GO bond went to Lake Mead.
So, so was that Tropicana Park? And then they took it, and then they took it to Lake Mead, correct?
Correct. And that, and that was during the time and during the discussion with the residents. And that was during the time and during the discussion with the residents, during the several versions of the concept plan at Tropicana Park, the residents in the northwest were advocating for a splash pad in the northwest to remain there.
Yeah, because I heard that they would like to have the splash pad back, so. Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Shepherd?
Yeah, I, I recall the conversation, I didn't know a decision was made, but what it was, was paving is to be done on Cape Coral Parkway between Chiquita and Sands. And what we brought up was, it would be wise probably to do the curbing, get that on the list of curbing, instead of paving it now and maybe a couple of years down the road ripping it up. That's what I recall talking about.
Okay. I'm sure staff will get back with us with some clarity on that.
We will.
Any other discussions? Okay, and I believe we have a motion and a second on the floor, and I don't see any other discussions. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Steinke?
Aye.
Welsh?
Aye.
Costin?
Aye.
Cummings?
Aye.
Gunter?
Aye.
Hayden?
Aye.
Long?
Aye.
Shepherd?
Aye.
Eight ayes, motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Move on to Item 6, Time and Place of Future Meetings. We have a committee that holds scheduled for Wednesday, September 13, 2023, 9:00 a.m. here in council chambers. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Meeting adjourned.